Okay, roll call please.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Sisnarsky.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley. Alderman Woods.
He honked.
Okay, along with Mayor Police.
I'm here. Is Alderman Woods here?
I did not hear a response.
I think he honked his car.
No.
Alderman Woods is not in the meeting.
He's not in the meeting?
No.
Alright. I didn't see his name, that's why I was asking.
Okay.
He'll be right on.
Okay, so let's, we do have a quorum, let's stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States. The United States of America.
And to the republic.
Republic.
Which stands one nation under God. Indivisible. Indivisible. Living. And justice for all.
Okay, before I get started with the minutes, is Alderman Woods now in the meeting? Okay, I'll continue. Approval of minutes, June 4th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Alderman Sorrentino's second. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Alderman Seaver.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Matt passes. Nick, do we have anybody that wishes to speak this evening?
I don't see anybody.
Okay. I don't have any written communiques. Under Mayor's report, a resolution to amend the agreement between the City of Wooddale Entertainment Management Group for Praise Fest 2021, they need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any questions then, then? Roll call, please.
Sorry. Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
And it looks like Art Woods is entering. Do you want me to wait?
Is he in, or?
Yes. Alderman Art Woods.
Here.
Okay, no, Art, this, we're voting for the resolution to amend the agreement between City of Wooddale Entertainment Manager. We already took roll call.
Oh, well, add me to the roll call, because I didn't, I didn't respond. But, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure you were saying here for the right thing. Okay, that passes. Next. If I have no objections, I'm going to read off the entire list of appointments, and we'll do one motion. Any objections?
No.
No.
Nope.
Nope.
Alright, we'll start with Wooddale for Greener Tomorrow, reappointment of Barb McCauley for a one-year term, reappointment of Pat Sampaletti for a two-year term, appointment of Deborah Andopoulos for a two-year term for Stormwater Subcommittee, replace, reappointment of Pat Pinella for a two-year term, reappointment of Jim Wheeler for a two-year term, Building Code Board of Appeals, reappointment of Jeff Stanek for a five-year term, Community Development Commission, reappointment of Dave Schimmanek, two-year term, reappointment of Dave Woods, two-year term, reappointment of Ron DiMatteo for a two-year term, appointment of Jamie Ochoa for a two-year term, appointment of Teresa Sadko for a one-year unacquired term of Richard T. Murray, Police Pension Board, reappointment of George Ellström for a two-year term, Streetscape and Economic Enhancement, reappointment of Linda Lucania for a two-year term, reappointment of Steve Michos for a two-year term, reappointment of Mitchell Town for a two-year term, reappointment of Mike Malone for a one-year term, Special Events Committee, appointment of Sandra Porch, Police and Fire Commissioners, appointment of Kristen Trentadue for a three-year term. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Second, the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. That concludes my report, Mr. Murmurs, under City Mayor's report.
Yes, I have one item tonight, and I believe it is a very good news item. I believe if everything holds, this should be our last council committee meeting via Zoom platform upon entering Phase Four of the Restore Illinois Plan, which should be later this month, as long as trends hold. We should be able to have our council and committee meetings again in person with some small tweaks and proper protocols for safety in place for distancing in the chambers. But we should be able to have those in-person meetings again come our next meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, consent agenda. I have two items. If there's no objection, any objections, otherwise I'll entertain a motion to approve two items on the consent agenda.
Make the motion to approve the two items on the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, we need a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, an ordinance amending Chapter 14, Article 4, Section 14.402A of the City of Wooddale Municipal Code restricting certain animals. Item number two, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Wooddale and RJN Group for the fiscal year 2021 inflow and infiltration project in the amount not to exceed 89,500. Do I have a motion?
A move.
So move.
Second.
Motion in the second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
And Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, Committee Chairman reports. Planning, zoning, and building. Alderman Jacob.
Want to report, Mayor. An ordinance amending ordinance number O-15-014, authorizing removing the prohibition on installation of windows and/or glass on the deck at the property at 396 West Irving Park Road, Wooddale, Illinois. That is my motion.
I have question.
But, no prob. Mike, did you second?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Wesley, go ahead, question.
So, when this came to us at one time, that there was stipulation when they asked that there would be no windows put in there. And my question to you is, why isn't this, far I'm concerned, this is a change of the variance now, because they take, putting windows in now, so it should go back to planning and zoning, because they making a change on that variance, that we, we were told no windows were going in there when it came at first.
Go ahead.
Mayor.
Go ahead. Yeah, this is, the variance was a setback variance.
The conditions and variance was imposed, and that's the part of the, went before the CDC, the CDC approved the variance that was entitled an ordinance granting a front yard variation for that particular, to allow for the wood canopy on the property. The, at the time, they were using, the plan was to use those, those plastic curtains. Plastic curtains obviously were cheaper. One of the concerns, as I understand it or recall, was that they would be building, you know, a big addition or whatever, and that wasn't the case. So, at the time, the owner, property owner, had no intention of putting any type of windows in there, was a very expensive venture. So, the council imposed the condition, the restriction on the windows, not exactly sure why, but the property owner was accepting of that. If they were changing the variation, in other words, they wanted a further encroachment in the front yard setback, that would require CDC involvement. The condition, however, that was imposed back on the, when that ordinance was passed, that condition was imposed by the city council. It was a recommendation from the CDC, but they granted the variance or approved, recommended granting the variance with conditions. Those conditions were acceptable to the property owner and acceptable to the city council. So what the, what the property owner, and it's a new owner now, wants to put some upgraded windows, he started doing it, he'd gotten a permit for the installation of the windows, and it was detected by staff that there was this procedural hurdle that needed to be overcome to remove that. It doesn't make sense, because it's not, generally, we wouldn't put in any kind of condition. You might put a condition that they have to fence the property in order to screen it from the street or resident, but, you know, talking about the design with the windows is really sort of an unusual condition to begin with. But it was imposed, and so what the builder's asking for is to be able to go forward, or the owner, to be able to go forward with the installation of these windows to allow for the additional use of the, of the space that will also keep the, you know, should have some impact on the noise, and there's some aesthetic benefits to that as well. So, that's the reason. So all you're, what's before you is, are you, as a council, are you willing to remove that condition or restriction? You're not otherwise adjusting the variation.
Alderman Wesley, do you have a follow-up?
I'll wait. I'm sure there's some other people that have something, but.
Could I be recognized? Anybody else have a question?
I have a question.
Alderman Woods, go ahead.
So, first, a couple statements. Going, going back to the start of this, I think this is three, four variation slash ordinances deep, when they, they started this back in, I think it was 2004, and this thing has only progressed to be a full-blown building. The window issues are, I believe, under the code, you can't put front end stations in a structure on a, on a deck. That's why that got imposed. So, to allow them to put the windows in now, essentially turns a a three-season room into a full-blown commercial structure. I personally, in good conscience, can't allow that to be a full commercial structure. And if we do allow it, then we have to start looking at the size of that structure. It's a little over 1,000 square feet, which accounts for a third of that building, because the building, I think, is 3,100 square feet. You know, then we get into, does that whole building need to be brought up to code? I mean, I can't, the reason that the windows got thrown in is, was more, more from the building department that it couldn't be done than a a need by the council or the CDC was the right thing to do. So, I would have to vote against doing this and would counsel everybody to vote against.
This is Alderman Messina, could I be recognized?
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback off of Alderman Woods's comments. We, what has essentially started as a deck, I would have in my own home, is essentially being proposed to be converted into a, an all-season room. And so, to me, there are a lot of codes that, I believe, would need to be met with this, and to me, it just, I appreciate the work they're putting into this, but I just feel like, based on that premise and based on the fact that this is two ordinances deep on variances that we've approved, I also could not approve this and, or speak for it, in good conscience.
Anywho.
I have another question.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So, are they, are they looking for facade program too? Are they looking into that too? Anyone know? They've got application in or no?
Can somebody answer that?
Yeah, this is Ed Cage.
Go ahead, Mr. Cage.
Very timely, Alderman Wesley. They submitted a facade improvement application just today.
Okay, but they were already, that facility was already given facade money for the parking lot. They can, they cannot come back for the same things, is that correct?
Ed Cage again, so, I believe Alderman Woods covered the prior ownership, requested, I believe, two, possibly three variances, and a facade improvement grant, which I believe was in the region of $20,000 to $30,000, and this is going back to, it was either 15 or 16, 2015, 2016, as.
It was for a sign.
Yeah, the sign.
Hold on, let Mr. Cage speak, please.
Thank you. Yeah, it covered some things, because the applicant didn't met with staff, this was, you know, back in 2015, I think 2016, met with staff. We provided direction, they did a limited amount of work, mainly the sign, dumpster enclosure, did not do too much more than that, qualified for the facade improvement grant, and therefore they only received a portion of it. Obviously, it's Alderman Woods or Alderman Wesley mentioned, is a new owner, who bought it fairly recently, took over from the old ownership, and is obviously in the process of making improvements. And they just, literally just submitted some paperwork for a facade grant. Today, we, staff hasn't even had a chance to review it, so they're sure that it came in, and that, I haven't even looked at it yet. Thank you.
Would, somebody have, somebody else had a question?
Alderman Sorrentino.
Go ahead.
We talked about crossroads. I don't know. The address doesn't do nothing.
Yes. It's a crossroads facility, yes.
And they want to take that outdoor deck and enclose it?
That, yes. Well, it's already enclosed. No, they're talking about the one that has the roof over it.
Plastic windows, okay.
And it has the plastic, right, there are windows or whatever you want to call it.
Can I be recognized?
Do you have a follow-up, Alderman Sorrentino, or are you finished?
No, I'm okay. I just wanted to confirm the location.
Okay, Alderman Catalano.
Yeah, what I don't understand, I mean, we're saying it's a deck, it doesn't look like a deck, and it's pretty much enclosed. So all they're going to do is replace those plastic windows and put windows. I mean, the place inside, when you dine in there, it's, you ask the inside of the premises. So, I mean, my opinion is, they want to close it up. It looks like, it doesn't look like a deck. I'm going to vote yes for it. That's my opinion, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor.
Who's that?
Alderman Woods.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Yeah, I, I get that it don't look like the deck. That's, that's entirely the problem. It was a deck, and it slowly, three ordinances later, and three variances later, morphs into something it's not supposed to be. You know, so we're turning a deck into a full-blown commercial structure. With that comes all the issues and liabilities with it. The last remaining thing to make it not a full-blown structure was not putting windows in it, which is actually against the code, given the type of structure. So to continue it, any issue that ever happened afterwards? Any safety thing? I mean, then, then I say that you got to make that building, if you want to put the windows in, you got to make it a full commercial structure then. I mean, that, that's essentially what we're doing. Then everybody, if they can do it, then everybody can bypass the building codes altogether. All you got to do is do four variances.
But, Mayor.
Mayor, can I be recognized?
Wait one second. So, are we saying that patio has no foundations on it, this?
Correct. It's built as a deck, being held up by piers.
But that was, I don't know, my understanding.
You can't pull a structural.
One second, one second. Let me just, I'm just, want to make sure I'm understanding. When they did that patio, they put the roof on it right away, right? That was from the get-go. So, you're telling me the city let them build it on piers and not foundations?
Because it was a covered deck. It was just a roof with open railings, four six-by-six posts going to bigger piers. Yes, there's six piers, or four piers, if I remember correctly, six piers, because they needed one in the center to make sure the floor didn't sag. Right? But that's all that's holding that up. So, technically, I, I'm assuming if somebody ran calculations, that thing wouldn't calc out.
Construction.
To meet commercial specifications. You know, we're going to try to turn it in to a full-blown commercial, I mean, I just can't do it. The guy still can do, still got to do the plastic, he can still, I'm not trying to take it away from him, but I can't, I can't in good conscience turn it into a full-blown commercial structure.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Can I be recognized?
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think in talking to a few other folks, the analogy I was given was, while it's not exactly the same, but it's comparable to what you see in the city when some of those decks are converted, and it is a structural integrity issue that could be potentially harmful. And they are shortcutting if they're not, that was my question initially, it was going to be to Alderman Woods, because of his background. They don't have, they have the foundation of a deck, but not of an actual all-season room construction. So maybe that's a question for Alderman Woods. I think he just confirmed that.
Can I be recognized again?
Go ahead, Alderman Catalano.
So, when they did this, why didn't the city, why did the city let them do it in the first place if it wasn't safe? That's my concern. So, when they did build the roof over the deck, wasn't the City of Wooddale out there, make sure that that structure was safe? I mean, that's nuts. I mean, that's definitely.
Hold on, Mr. Bonds, can you answer, or Mr., I know Mr. Cage was not here back in 2004, was it? Who wants to, Mr. Bonds, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, that may be a question for Mr. Cage. He's got a permit pending before him. I would assume it was code compliant at the time they, a permit was issued for the deck, but I don't, that I don't know of. I don't have personal knowledge of that.
I can weigh in. Ed Cage.
We're talking about back in 2004? Is that, Mr. Cage?
Thank you, Mayor. So, what happened in 2004, obviously, was, you know, quite some time ago. I don't know what happened at that point. I do know that the applicant has an architect. It will have to be built to code, otherwise it won't be approved and won't be allowed. What happened before, I don't know, whether the prior owner had an architect. I don't know, but I do know that the current one does, and it will have to be approved, otherwise it won't be allowed. Period. Thank you.
May I be recognized?
Mayor. Hold, hold on one sec. So, he's applying for the permit to redo these windows, is what's, what's happening, and that's what triggered this.
Okay.
Is that correct?
So, Ed Cage, you got it, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, the, the new owner has applied for various permits. One is to complete the work on the canopy and the entrance way that the prior owner did, started but did not finish.
Correct.
That's one permit. And then he has another permit for the various work that he's undertaken to date. He has applied for a permit for the addition, you know, the room that we're talking about with the windows. That's when, obviously, when staff came across the fact that the ordinance was, the variance was approved in 2015, I believe, with the plastic windows versus the regular windows. So, he, Mayor.
2015 was 2004.
Yeah, I can't speak on 2004, because obviously that was before me.
Okay. Who is that, Mr. Murmurs?
Mayor.
Alderman Woods?
That was Alderman Jacob.
Oh, Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Alderman Catalano. I mean, they're, they're, it's already part of the building. It looks like part of the building. It doesn't look like a deck. I think the real windows make the building look a heck of a lot nicer, and it's a new business owner that's coming to town that wants to make the building a nicer building. I'm not really sure why. It doesn't look like a deck to me. It's part, it's, like Alderman Catalano said, it's enclosed.
Mayor.
Hold on, hold on.
I would agree with Alderman Catalano on this, that it should be approved.
I, so, the concerns here, it sounds like, so they put up the deck, they had a roof. At some point, they asked to close it off a little more or something, whatever year that was, and had plastic windows or something. And I'm not sure if it's two, I heard 2004, I heard 2015. I don't think it was 2015. That would be a handful of years, a few years ago.
It was 2004.
Right, okay, 2004. So basically, nobody on this council was, was on there. Well, maybe Alderman Wesley was, but nobody else. The structure, I mean, I mean, the concerns about the structures are very important. I don't know, that's, it's been up for a while, but the city should have, I don't know, they should have had to do something to. Go ahead, Alderman Sisnarsky, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, is this a special request, or is this a, is this a special, I mean, I'm just asking, is this a special request, or is this just an ordinary?
They, they applied for the windows, and, so I am understanding it, Mr. Cage came across the staff, whoever found so-called request by the council in 2004 to put in plastic windows, so.
Right.
And I'm guessing, so, if they have the plastic windows, the walls got to be up, the roofs got to be up. I, I honestly, there should be some kind of foundation. Is the foundation proper? I mean, that's a problem if the foundation's not right, though, but.
I guess the second half of my question is that, is, I don't know if this would fall under a case-by-case basis, or is this, I mean, like Alderman Woods is saying, he said, you know, you got to do it for everyone. That's what I'm asking, is this a special use, or is this a special permit we're looking at?
No, this is just a permit about the windows, but there's some questions have been raised, and sounds more like building codes and, and legal type stuff. Mr. Bonds, I don't know.
I don't see the city not passing it if it wouldn't hold it, but, like you say, if you open it up, if, you know, Mr. was saying they opened it up, then it becomes part of the rest of the building, but I don't know how they counted it. How did they count it before this? Was it counted as an exterior, not in the plot, not in the county? Like, say you have a basement, but you don't count a basement. Is that how they were counting this? You have 1,000 square feet, but you have 4,000.
Okay, Mr. Cage, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. What happened before 2015, I can't speak of. However, moving forward, Alderman Woods makes an excellent point. There was a reason the prior owner did some things that were not ideal, and the most recent version of that is the damage to the canopy, starting the work, selling the business, and leaving before it was completed. So, there's some history there, clearly. The new owner, the staff that is in effect today, will review it, and as Alderman Woods says, if it's not per code, we will not approve it. One of the conditions we came across when the permit came in is this condition for the windows. Clearly, if the council does not allow or does not change the variance to change the windows, they can't do that. The architect has to review it. I don't know what happened before. I don't know who reviewed it before. I don't even know if the business owner had an architect at the time. However, the new business owner has an architect. He has to stamp the plans. It has to be per code. If it's not, I can guarantee you, we won't approve it. Period. Thank you.
Number one, I just wanna make sure. So it wasn't, this isn't a variance change cuz this was a stipulation set on the, by the council back in whatever, 2004. The question becomes, is the structure safe? That's, that's pretty important. And now I would hope that the staff back in 2004 should have passed a safe structure. Is, is that your concerns, Mr. Alderman Woods? I mean, it sounds like.
So let me, let me.
Go ahead. I wanna make sure, but that doesn't.
So there's multiple things at play, right? So to, so one, the thing was built in 2004 as an open structure, basically, that had a roof over part of it. The roof then got extended over time. Then they built the knee walls. There were multiple versions or multiple ordinances and variances given to be able to close up and have a knee wall. And then they put screens in there and had screen panels. And then they put plastic, like Visqueen, over it.
Right.
To continue. And then the next generation was to get those vinyl snap-on things that he got. All the time being, because it's only a deck structure, there's no full foundation under it. So there's no way this passes commercial code. I don't care who the architect is that goes out there. You can't do it. And if it does pass code and you tell me it's a commercial structure, then they have to meet the 85% brick ordinance. They got around all that by building a deck first and putting a roof on it, then coming back and doing knee walls, coming back and adding Visqueen. You know, it's one step after the other. So I, I, I get the incremental use of the building.
I have a question. Alderman Catalano was first, go ahead.
Yeah, so I agree with you, Alderman Woods. Now this is more, more of a safety issue. So if this structure was built with all these upgrades, now we're talking about safety. So my opinion, they shouldn't even be operating unless that we know that it's the same structure. So I'm gonna change my mind on that because God forbid something should happen. I probably couldn't live with myself, so.
Right.
Just one quick point.
Mr. Cage, go ahead.
Just to clarify, they're not operating. Business is closed. There's no operation in effect. So we, you know, obviously, a lengthy discussion. The prior owner has created numerous issues. The new owner is trying to resolve them. If the old owner created a problem and it's not safe, then it's gonna have to be fixed, period. This is exactly what happened. And I, I know the city council knows that the canopy, the work has been going on for, what, six months approximately?
Right.
It's been going on for six months because, yes, the prior owner started the work, was stopped because it wasn't per code, and then sold the property as is with the canopy half-constructed. The new owner has come in. We made them get an architect. It has to be per code. They got a permit for that. Now, going back to the deck, there's obviously a lot of history there, some history before me. If it's a safety issue, the business isn't open right now. We all know that.
Right.
Safety issue, they cannot occupy it, period. They either have to bring it up to code or they can't use it. And, you know, that, so there's a number of things going on here that goes with the permit review. What we're talking about is the windows. There's obviously some concerns with those. But the architect has to review it. If it's, if it's a life safety issue, it will not be approved. Period. Thank you.
Mayor?
Alderman Smarsky wanted to be here, go ahead.
Is there a way to re-amend it based on a review of inspector inspecting the piers and inspecting the structure to make sure that the structure can hold or withhold it? Or I don't know if anybody, if there was even a motion, but.
That was gonna be my next question to Mr. Bond. Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, the item that's, the items that's before the council now is there was a condition that the council imposed specific to the windows. And if, if it's the desire of the council, majority of the council, that windows would be acceptable through the permitting process, if that structure is not capable from an architectural standpoint. And as Mr. Cage indicated, they would have to put a seal of approval on it and their license online. So it, it would have to be fully compliant with the code. They can't get to that point because right now there's a, a condition which won't allow windows to begin with. So if, if the vote is in the, in the negative for the approval, then it never goes through that review to make an determination as to whether or not the structure is capable of supporting the windows that are, that they're, they've requested a permit for. So really, the issue is that it, you will, before it's done, as Mr. Cage indicated, there will be a permit review. There will be an architectural certification that this structure, these windows are, are supported by the structure and it is otherwise fully compliant with our, the city code.
Go ahead, Alderman Smarsky. We're gonna say something.
Okay, I, yeah, I guess he needs to answer it. So it doesn't, if we pass it, it, to say, how good we pass it, it still could not go through because of the inspection.
Correct.
Okay. I mean, either way, we inspect it. If it doesn't go through, we can inspect it. But if it's gotta be inspected first, and he can still be turned down by that, by the city inspector. By the building inspector.
I believe so. Alderman Wesley, go ahead. You were next.
All right. Mr. Cage, you're still on the line, right?
Yes, he is.
All right. So my question is, so he's got a permit for the roof, right? Does he have a permit for the, does he have a permit for plumbing?
Mr. Cage?
Correct. There are, Ed, Ed Cage again. So he has a permit for various improvements. And we discovered the window issue as the perm, as the permits, you know, the permit came in. Some were issued. Obviously, the deck covered, you know, three-season room, whatever we're gonna call it, with the window issue. Then we found the ordinance with the condition that we're discussing this evening. So we couldn't let him move ahead with that because we know that that's an issue. So his architect will have to submit.
Let me, let me do a follow-up, Mayor, if you don't mind. So the roll-up door that they put in on the other deck, was that a permit or was that issue? Was there a design on it or what's the deal?
Mr. Cage?
Yes, the architect submitted plans. They were reviewed and approved.
Alderman Wesley?
No, I, I, I just, what my concern is, he's making plans or, or giving us stuff as he wanna go along with the project. Now he's going to go back and look at that deck, put the windows in. Now he's got to design it or whatever. I just think, if you wanna do it, you should put all the package together and pull all the permits at once and do it that way, not piecemeal it. We piecemeal it.
Hold on. Is Ed Cage again?
Go ahead, Mr. Cage.
Okay, just to clarify so that we're all clear. The plans, the building has to be per code, otherwise it will not be approved. I know that the entire city council knows this, that restaurants and bars have been closed since March. So we've been directed and told, and we've given incentives to local businesses during this time because of the pandemic. Now, other restaurants currently are open. They have the exterior open. This business is not open, period. So we're trying to work with a business owner, just as we would work with any business owner. Again, it has to be per code. If we're going to nitpick a nu, a number of different permits and whether they got piecemealing it or not, the project and the improvements will probably go away. So what we're trying to do, and I, I know that my department has been accused of being business unfriendly before, what we're trying to be is business friendly. If the council's not comfortable with the windows, that's the council's decision. However, and I'm gonna say this for the third time to emphasize it, if the deck is not per code, it will not be approved. Now, the question is, not of the new owner, of the prior owner, was it built to code in the first place? So again, now we're in this conundrum. If we don't approve of it, yes, we'll have to go out and verify it and they'll have to have an inspection. And if it's not, it's not per code, then we're gonna have to address it. However, we have a business owner who's willing to bring things up to code that may or may not have been to code in the past. I think that's a good thing. I try and work with business owners to, to make good improvements to the city. However, if the city council doesn't want to amend the windows, then that part of the project goes away. And that's, you know, that's the city council's decision. So thank you.
Okay. So number one, hold on, one second. So number one, business owners, if they wanna do 10 permits, one after the other, they, they have that right. Number two, the windows, I mean, if we were just changing, getting rid of the plastic and putting the windows and everything's up to spec, I didn't see a big deal. But if you're telling me that things years ago were maybe not done up to spec or something, that should be checked out, of course. We don't, we don't wanna see, you know, porch collapses on TV or something like you see in Chicago all the time. That's. And, and let's face it, anybody, any resident who does remodeling in their homes has to bring up their homes up to code, like for, say, smoke detectors in every bedroom. So that's a must. And I've heard many complaints for that one. And so with this business, I would imagine they have to bring everything up to code. So my question is to Mr. Bond. So if we're just approving, okay, the motion, what it should be, yes, to the windows, providing that patio, that covered patio is brought up to code properly, is that correct, Mr. Bond? I wanna make sure.
Yeah, what you would be doing, the action before you, simply removing that condition that was imposed before. They would still be required to go through the permit process, which they've done. They would need to comply with the building code. If they don't comply with the building code, Mr. Cage's department would deny them that, the permit. But they can't make the application for the permit with this condition on it. And there is no legal authority for the city to compel a business owner to make all changes that they're contemplating at one time or submit all permits. They have the absolute right to submit it. If they wanna do it on a piecemeal basis, they have the right to do it, whether it's a financial matter, whether it's a, it's, you know, a phased improvements. But what, tonight, the only issue before you is, is this, is this a condition that the council is willing to forego with the complete understanding that it would still go to the building department through the permit review process? It would require all compliance with the building code before a permit could be issued. If the deck is not compliant with the code, whether it was because of some, something from the past. And, and I, I believe that when the codes, the permits are issued, you know, the building department before Mr. Cage has, has reviewed permits and there's a protocol. But to the extent they're not, it's not up to code, the permit would be denied. That would be the end of the discussion. It would not come back to the council. It would be a staff decision that it does not comply with the building code and that the windows would not be permitted. So, but right now, there's a condition that prevents the building owner, the new owner, from coming forward even to have that request considered because it is not currently allowed.
And Mr. Bond, when you're talking about all these things, stuff, I've heard about percentages of bricks. I know that, that's a brick building. I don't know the exact percentage, of course, but of what they have. But we're talking every, so like, any resident who's remodeling has to bring their stuff up to code. This would be the same here, correct? I mean, the safety is, is important. So again, so I'm, even if we don't approve this, you're we still, do we, are we gonna know that that deck is, was done properly when they passed it in 2000?
Mayor, this is Ed Cage again.
Go ahead.
So the, the true benefit of the permit process, and I know that someone in the city council and the residents will share, probably shares this opinion is, when you go through the permit review, then you have to, you know, there's a trigger to bring everything up to code, right?
Right.
I think the mayor covered that with smoke alarms, et cetera. So what the, you know, the good thing and the, the good news and the bad news is of a permit review is the good news is that you have to bring things up to code, up to the current code that the city has. The bad news is for the, you know, in some cases, that that usually costs more money. But the good news is, whatever happened before, obviously, has an impact on what's there now. However, what's going to be there in the future has to be per code, period. Thank you.
Mayor? Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
Yeah. So again, going back to what Ed Cage is saying, and if the building's brought up to code and they're making a more permanent structure, it's gonna be inspected. So I, I really don't see, they're, they're not gonna approve it if it's an unsafe structure. So they put the windows and it's gonna look better. This business is coming into town, trying to build a nicer building. I, I just don't see what the big ordeal is of.
No, I, I actually, Peter, I'll, I'll agree. So the, the windows isn't that big a deal. And naturally, it's a better aesthetic look, right? But providing that everything has to be brought up to code. So does that have to be in the motion path? Because I wanna make sure that this, this is correct.
Said it was.
Yeah, that, it does not need to be in a motion. That's currently under the city code. To the extent that somebody wants to amend the motion to include that, that, that's saying it's gotta be complying with the law. Every, every ordinance that you adopt or every action you take has to be in accordance with state law or the city code. So it's, it's not necessary. It's already part of our city code. And if it's, if the condition is lifted, it would still be required. And I, I don't suggest that that's done because otherwise we'd have to put every single condition of that permit approval. And I, I don't think, one, we have all those in front of us. And two, to do, to list them and then omit one would mean that it doesn't have to comply. It's required to comply with all the permit requirements prior to the city issuing a, a permit for the installation of those windows.
Okay. Go ahead, Alderman Wesley, and then.
So here, here's my question. First off, with all the discussions going on with this and all that, why wasn't this hold off to committee and it came right to council? I, I'm just asking that question.
I can answer the procedural question.
Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, because this was a condition that the council imposed. So it's a condition that the council remu, removes. There was nothing further to it than that. It was done at a council meeting. So an action done at, in one, one particular process, such as a council meeting, is generally modified or reversed through that same process under the Illinois municipal code. So it's just a matter, it's a procedural process.
Mayor? Alderman Sorrentino was next.
This hand was up. You know, just keep an open mind here, gang. The idea of the safety issues, we have a remedy here to bring up that building to code by just taking this window compliance. Question. Now he goes for the windows and the architect comes out. He's gotta bring it all up to code. And that's the easiest thing we could ever do as a council. Is let him do what he wants to do. He'll have to then bring it up to code. And now if there's a safety issue currently and he keeps the plastic windows, guess what? The safety issues are still a concern versus letting him have the replacement window, take that. versus letting him have the replacement window, take that off. Let the architect go out there, let the inspectors go out there. And if they deem it unsafe, which they may, the boy or the owner's going to have to bring it all up to code or scrub the idea. Or they might tell, hey, you got to bring this up to code regardless of what you do with your windows. I think this approval of the windows is going to be our green light to assure us all of the full safety for their property. And that's why I would advocate to let them have the windows.
Okay. Any more questions? Or do I do need a motion?
Mayor.
Who's that? Alderman Jacob?
Alderman Jacob, I want to make a motion to approve.
Oh, wait, actually, you did make the motion, mic second, then the questions. I'm sorry.
Alderman Woods needs to, uh, chime in.
Alderman Woods?
Did you get jiggle that light on?
I'm mute, I'm mute, Alderman Woods.
Is he, is he still on?
There you go. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So I wanted to clarify. I'm, I, I don't know if the deck as a deck is safe or unsafe. I'm not, I'm not stating that it is, is or isn't. What I'm telling you is you can't turn a deck into a commercial structure. Commercial structure requires a full form foundation that doesn't exist here. And under our code, it would then need brick. To make that a commercial structure, there's so many things at play. The guy's not going to tear that room down and put a full form foundation and rebuild that room. It's not going to happen. And if he did, then he'd have to get a variance to put a, a full blown structure in that same variance space. I think the attorney could speak to the fact that if he tore it down to put the foundation in, then he'd have to get variances again because there's, there were setback issues that you probably wouldn't have gotten with a regular structure. The only reason any of this happened or we're even having this conversation is because three prior councils said, okay, it's not a big deal. Give them a deck, okay, it's not a big deal. Let them enclose it a little bit so he gets a little more use out of it. And again, now we're back trying to turn a deck into a full commercial building. It is not. So two arguments are two things. One, will the deck hold the people? As a deck, I'm assuming that the prior building department did their job. And as a deck, people can go out there and stand on it. But as we morph this thing into a commercial structure, it does not meet the code for a commercial structure. We don't even need to have the conversation of looking at it because it doesn't have the full foundation. So there's two things at play. Thank you.
Mr. Bond. I, I have a question for Mr. Bond.
So. Yes.
So basically, a deck is looked at differently than a commercial building.
Correct. Yes.
So if this, even if we pass the windows, technically, he's enclosing the building, it's now a commercial building versus a deck. He doesn't have a foundation, he has to rip everything out. Or, or what?
Well, I mean, if he's using it, continues to use it for a deck and it, there are no life safety issues with the use of it as a deck, if the installation of the windows, uh, creates a, a weight issue or a, a lack of proper foundation, then yeah, he would not be able to, uh, to use it.
Yeah, but.
If it's a life saving.
But hold on, we're changing this, uh, but if I'm understanding what Alderman Woods is saying, we're changing this because we're fully enclosing it. Now you're making it part of the commercial building, and it's not really a deck anymore.
Correct.
That's, that's what I'm understanding.
You're, you're backdooring the codes by doing the progressive steps over years and turning it into something it's not. It can exist as a deck. Let the guy have the plastic. That's why those windows were never allowed to go in there. That was kind of the last safety to it being a deck. And every one of those hearings, everybody said, uh, it's never going to be more than a deck. It's never going to be, nothing's ever going to be more than it is until it is, and that's what's happening. I'm not against the guy, I'm glad he's fixing the building. There's nobody's going to spend the money to put a full foundation around that thing to make it a legal commercial structure, right? And that, and none of we're going to try to do that, there, there's a whole host of other issues that we're going to get into.
Mayor, can I be recognized?
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
I mean, just to round off this conversation, I mean, right, what Alderman, um, Art Woods mentioned, you're also creating a setback precedent. Uh, I think I'm listening to Attorney Bond, and he's very carefully saying, if I'm hearing him correctly, uh, if, if the window installation causes there to be an issue with the deck, um, then, then that would be against code. So I, I have concern there because I, I think we're saying, if it doesn't, which more than likely, windows will not cause that, that kind of issue, will they be still forced to meet exist, or prior deck codes that may have been missed by prior, um, I don't know.
But if you're speculating now. A deck. Once you enclose it completely, it's no longer a deck.
Correct, that's the issue.
That's the issue. Mr. Bond.
Well, and I can defer to, to Mr. Cage. But if that, if the windows, the deck will not support the windows based on the, on our code.
It's, it's not an issue of it's going to hold up 200 more pounds.
Well, let me, let me.
Right.
But if the, if the deck was compliant, code compliant at the time it was permitted, that deck could remain.
Right, I'm not saying take out the deck, the deck can stay. You just can't make it an enclosed building. You can't turn a deck into an enclosed building. We can't build houses on decks and we can't, we certainly can't build commercial structures on decks. The, the, the code doesn't allow it. So as a deck, it can stay.
Build off the back. Mayor, can I have one final point?
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
I mean, at that point, if it sounds like the recommendation is going to be, you know, obviously, he'd have to build a foundation, this would become a structure. He's got no setback issue in the back. Wouldn't staff guide him towards that as being probably the smarter investment at that point before this individual spends even more money?
Take up your parking lot?
I mean, he's got a huge parking lot that it's not used.
Wait a minute.
Can we ask yet?
It's not us again to tell them.
Can we ask Mr. Cage a question?
Mike, hold on. We're not debating this situation.
No.
Go ahead, Alderman. What do you want to?
I wanted to, could, could we ask, uh, Director Cage, uh, a question?
Go ahead.
Mr. Cage, can you build? I know maybe we, some of this is semantics, but can you build a commercial structure on piers?
Mr. Cage.
This is Ed. So to answer Mr. Woods' question, no. So the question really is, for me, is what was built there in the first place? And if it's truly a deck, then the que, you know, and we allowed it to go into the setback, why are there walls there, right? Why is there a roof there? Why are there windows there? So I think what I've heard, um, this evening is that we're looking at a deck that's being allowed to be enclosed. I haven't inspected it, and if that's the case, it's a much bigger issue. So really, that's, you know, we're not going to approve something that doesn't comply with the code. If it's not going to comply with the code, we wouldn't approve it.
No, no, but.
Can we similarly just go look and see what the foundation is there before we pass this? That, that's going to answer a lot of questions, right? If, if it, if it's on piers, then we know what we can tell the owner. And if it's not, if, if that thing's not on piers and it's on a full foundation, then I don't have any problem giving the guy the windows.
What if it's a, the safety issue now, what do we tell them?
Mr. Cage, again.
Mr. Cage, go ahead.
Yeah, um, actually, while we were having the conversation, uh, it's one of my notes is that, um, we'll have to have an inspector go out there and take a look at it. Obviously, um, yeah, my, my prior experience in other communities that, is that, you know, you're allowed decks within a setback, but you typically don't enclose decks with, uh, walls and windows and what have you. So, uh, we need to have someone go out there and verify whether it is in fact a deck or whether it's, you know, truly an addition. And if it's a deck, then obviously there's problems. So yes, I, I think that's, uh, uh, one, one of my notes that I put in that, um, we'll have to have someone go out and take a look at that. Thank you.
So we should table it?
I, yeah, I think you should table it till we find out what it is.
Motion.
Go ahead.
Does the motioner agree?
Who made the motion to what?
I made the motion. Yeah, I agree to table it.
Okay.
Does the secondary agree?
Michael, you were the second.
Yeah, based on, uh, I guess based on inspection, yeah.
Okay, so the motion's the table.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
I'm sorry, can I get close to?
It's the table, Andy, it's the table.
The table, okay, I thought so, okay, sorry, yeah.
Motion is the table.
Yep, yep, yeah.
Okay, Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
All right, that's tabled. All right, that concludes your report, Alderman.
That concludes my, that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under Public Health, Safety and Judiciary and Ethics, Alderman Sorrentino.
Uh, no report but a question, Mayor. We're allowed, the, uh, this window deal, I would ask them to find out what type of windows. They may be pop outs. It's like the plastic now gets rolled up, the windows may pop out, so he's got an open venue. But whoever's inspecting, maybe Ed could ask that question unless it's in the permit already. But other than that, no report.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Catalano.
Yes, I have one there. A resolution approving an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Robinson engineer for the design and construction, engineering for the city hall and police department parking lot improvements in the amount not to exceed $39,775. That is my motion.
Second.
Question. Second. Alderman, go ahead, got a question?
Yeah, what's the full scope of the parking lot? I thought we just redid it not too long ago.
Drainage, drainage issue.
Hold on.
Is it still the weeping area or?
This is. Who wants to answer that? Mr. Lang?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the full scope is to mitigate the, the drainage issue in the western end of the lot, resurface the entire lot along with any curb and gutter replacement, and to, uh, handle the police department needs as they relate to the new facility that's proposed to the south of city hall.
Right.
Alderman Wesley, you were next, go ahead.
So didn't, didn't we hire an engineer to look where that, uh, water was coming from before? We, didn't, didn't we just have any pinpointed and they corrected the problem? And now we back to redoing this?
I'll, I'll take this topic from here. Uh, we did hire Robinson Engineering, which is why we're giving them this phase of the project. Robinson Engineering is familiar with the parking lot. They are the ones that fixed the other drainage portion closer to, um, the city hall entrance door. We had two drainage issues. We only fixed, uh, with storm drains, the, or catch basins, the one issue, um, closer to the city hall entrance. The one at the end of the lot existed, uh, before and has progressively gotten worse, but we did not want to repair that until we were going to repave and redesign the lot potentially with the police department's, uh, need for some better flow of traffic.
Follow up, Alderman Wesley?
Well, I'm good, Mayor.
Any other questions? Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Does, uh, Ellen, do you know how long ago it was we paved that? It seems like the main parking lot there was, I, I want to say can't be seven years old.
I can answer that question. We last paved that lot. I can answer that. We last probably paved that lot around 2009, maybe?
I think Flute did it.
No, because I was, I was in.
No, I was at Alderman when we did.
It was more like 2013.
Then it could have been, I, I don't know about that, maybe 11 or 12.
That wasn't my first year, it was second or third. So the, the earliest is 2012.
Well, regardless, we're doing a bunch of structural work, and we figured as long as we're out there tearing it all up, it needs to be resurfaced.
Anybody got a question? Hello?
No.
All right, we got a motion, we have a second. Let's do a roll call then.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley? Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And Alderman Woods?
Yes.
All right, your passes.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Administration, Alderman Woods.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two reports. One, a resolution amending the Personnel Policy Manual for the City of Wooddale Regarding Harassment and Victims Economic Security and Safety Act. I'll make that my motion.
Second.
Any questions on this? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
And Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Uh, next, I have a resolution approving the tax increment financing terms for the Bryn Mawr Avenue addition to Wooddale. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions on this? All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
And Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under Other Business Airport Noise, Alderman Jacob?
Uh, no report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Stormwater Commission, Alderman Wesley.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Approval listed bills, Alderman Woods.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills for June 18th, 2020 in the amount of $905,122.77.
Do you have a second? Okay, Alderman Sisnarsky, second. Any questions on any of the bills?
I, I have one question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So the road project that's going on in Ward Two and Three?
Yes.
The stormwater project you're talking about?
Yeah, and I noticed they submitted a bill already. Am I right or am I wrong?
Mr. Lang?
Yes, that is correct. They submitted their first pay invoice.
It's probably for the lift station stuff, I would imagine.
I, that's what I'm asking.
For worshiping place since May 11.
Right. Was a lift station first?
That was the first piece that went in in front of our booster station.
I just want me, I didn't know what it was, that's what I'm asking.
Thank you. No, no problem. Any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
And Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. And that passes. Okay, no, I, no executive session, no, it is to be referred. I need a motion to adjourn.
So Mayor, what's the next meeting? Has, uh, we skipped a week, this is next week, this is the fifth week.
Yes, next week, no meeting, and then the 4th of July is no meeting, that's second. Our next committee meeting is the 9th. I believe the date is the 9th. Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Wesley. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?